Help them open the door, it makes some cool air.
The United States of America, and we do a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody on the stage for one second, have a moment's silence, tomorrow will be nine eleven, and we always have a little moment of silence. One or two more, it seems that you did. To, uh, put a flag and have masks tomorrow. Roll call.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mrs. Condon.
Here.
Mr. Malina.
Here.
Mr. Silverston.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Uh, approval minutes from August thirteenth, twenty thirteen.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Condon.
Yes.
Mr. Malina.
Yes.
Mr. Silverston.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
Acceptance of financial reports for fiscal officer.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Condon.
Yes.
Mr. Malina.
Yes.
Mr. Silverston.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I, uh, ordinance twenty-four, two thousand thirteen should be added, and emergency ordinance to make necessary transfers in advance of two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Did you say resolution twenty-four?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-four.
Resolution.
Roll call.
Mr. Malina.
Yes.
Mr. Silverston.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Condon.
Yes.
We also have resolution fifty-three, twenty thirteen, and resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement for the purchase of a two thousand fourteen international truck and equipment for the use in the service department from Jobco Truck Equipment for a sum not to exceed one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
And this should probably go by emergency.
Roll call.
Mr. Silverston.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Condon.
Yes.
Mr. Malina.
Yes.
Comments from the public, oh, I'm sorry, any other amendments? No. Comments from the public, thirty minutes maximum time, five minutes per person, raise your hands, state the name and address. Comments from the public.
Hi, Andrew Gordon, one oh three oh four Clipper Cove. Some pictures, still dealing with the zoning issues since zoning board never, meeting never happened, just had a couple of questions based on these pictures. If anybody else here wants to look at them. I'm sort of wondering why there's a pipe on a homeowner's property in Aurora Shores, which obviously shows water from the retention pond in Harren place coming out there. And the last couple of pictures show rain barrels which at the last zoning board meeting were denied, being put up in the.
I checked into your rain barrels for you, you want to know now or you want to finish?
No, I mean, rain barrels end with downspouts there.
The rain barrels, when people are purchasing them, they're about to purchase from this developer.
Uh, wouldn't the developer have told them they were deemed not allowed by, uh, or my develop?
The, 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 they're not, they're not used for water retention for storm water retention.
Rainbows are permissible, except when they fill up, they have to divert it back into the storm system. So they're provable practice, as long as they're tied back into the central storm system.
Alright, so if I go talk to those homeowners, they're going to say that they, they, they asked for those, because I find that very hard to believe. I'm gonna suggest that they were sold those by the developer's suggestions.
Here's, I mean, from looking in and speaking as a village engineer, what they're doing now is creating an entire different storm sewer retention schematic that will be up to code. It's not in place yet, but it's going to be, they're gonna create it, um, and as long as it's up to code, they don't have to come in front of us or, uh, the BZA, um, at all. So as long as they put it up to code, we're good. Um, the problem is, is that it's not put in yet, and so we're, we're waiting for them to come up with that schematic, it's gotta be, uh, then approved by the zoning engineer, and then as long as it's to code, there's really nothing we can do.
And I stated.
And the rain barrels are extra. If they want to put them in, they can, if, if they want to sell them to their residents, they can, they want to push off, and actually, you know, as long as it's tied into a, the way that you explained it, is that this is all gonna go into a, a separate retention pond or area reservoir, and then that will then slowly divert to, um, the shores.
But it's not right now.
What?
It's not right now.
Right, it's not right now, and that's, we're all frustrated.
And, and that pipe is, should definitely not be there.
Right, and eventually you said what's gonna be there is what, a two-inch?
No, no, and I'm just saying in the retention pond that they have.
They have, it's a two-inch orifice that it spills through once it's filled. But that, that pipe won't be there anymore.
Well, that's actually one of our neighbors' jobs.
Yes.
That can our neighbors.
Well, why don't we do it this way, what, what is your neighbors', what, which address is this? I mean, you, yesterday you were part of the group that talked to.
Right.
Tom Oster, okay.
And when he was under the impression that you guys had approved those rain barrels at the zoning board, you know, is what he said.
What?
No.
There's no ways under that impression.
Am I wrong?
That, that the neighbor didn't.
Yes.
The meeting that was last night, yeah.
Yeah, but he didn't say that we approved it. You know, because I told him that we.
He suggested that John told him that they were approved at council.
I understand it, but don't, don't say that we did it.
I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying that he's, you know, it seems like there's three stories, you know, oh, they're selling them to the homeowners, Tom was definitely not aware of that yesterday, or he would've said, oh, well, we sell those to the homeowners.
Well, there's the, if you go for the other ones, because Mark had asked me about the ones inside the center, um, they're, that have no, I don't understand why they have rain barrels, so that's why they require them, and that's why I was told that they could buy them through them, and EPA approves them, and that's what they use to water flowers, and they recommend that people do that, you know, this whole thing.
Much pipe is a different story, I mean, there's blue water coming down our ditch, we all know where that water's coming from, and I would suggest if you look at those retention ponds after a serious storm, that you'll see like a watermark line like this, and if it's really holding water, it shouldn't have that much water draining out, like right after an event, unless it's all being fed into that pipe you're working in.
So, I need that, you talking right across the street from me, right?
No, it's, it's probably more towards the corner of.
Okay, what's her last name, I'm sorry.
I don't know her last name.
Okay. From Baker's up?
No, other direction going past Rich Masalowski and.
Okay.
The lady, the lady whose tree they, they cut down, it's, it's on her property.
Alright.
But it's running down everybody in Clipper Cove's property.
Before the seven o'clock meeting, I had Gene show Mark the drawings that were doing it, and I know last night as we spoke that they're willing to pay for engineer, separate engineer to review it and give his, um, answers whether he believed that that was correct or not correct or any improvements that he could put forth on it, um, they're willing to still do that too. Okay. So. I mean, uh, anybody else got anything?
Yeah. I'm glad that this is, sounds like it's.
I heard I need your name and address.
Mark Felkamp, three eight two seven Nautilus Trail.
Thank you.
Um, I'm glad, it sounds like we're moving in the right direction now, but why are we at this point now? This has been going on for, since April. How did we?
This has been going, this has been going on since further than, I mean, you know, a lot of stuff, I get, I don't know, maybe it's my fault that I don't come out and tell everybody things I do.
I'm not blaming you, Sam.
No, no, let me, let me finish, Mark, I'm not saying you are, you know, I know some people do, uh, I've read it, but the, the fact of it is, is just because something's out there doesn't mean I'm not out trying to fix it and make it right, um, behind the scenes, um, and just like when they brought up the zoning board field, I called, you're never gonna get it approved, I know you're not gonna get it approved, you, but they had to see for themselves, they're not gonna get it approved, because basically they think I don't know the residents that I represent, apparently, so they come here and make their fuss, and you see, then they see really what the other side of it is, and like I said before, those weren't supposed to be walkout basements, I guarantee you, that all of a sudden they just see, hey, you know what, if I dig this out, and I re-engineer this, I could get twenty-five thousand dollars. No, it's not that much. I can get X amount of dollars difference.
Yeah.
In addition to what I already did.
But, but my question is, why wasn't it caught by the engineer who should be reviewing the drawings? The, the drawings were submitted to the village engineer.
He told them what were two.
But they were going off their original plan, you know, what was submitted to the engineer, what was approved was the original plan that the, the front roofs were gonna tie into a sewer system, it was only gonna run off into a, they do it, you know, into the storm drain system, and then the rear roofs were gonna do the same, um, but separate, well, that was all that was provided, and then all of a sudden we started seeing, you know, downspouts and rain barrels, and then we, you know, because they're, they started to deviate from the plan and we caught them, and that's why they ended up coming to us with a variance.
Okay.
Um, and so, I mean, I think everybody here is at least being as diligent as we can be, unfortunately, and I'm not trying to slander builders, but unfortunately sometimes they don't always do what they tell us they're going to do, and so we have to constantly be the watchdog on them, um, hopefully, uh, with this new plan, um, it will alleviate some of our, all of our, um, problems, because I'm getting water in my basement too now, so.
Right.
I just put that on record, so if I sell my house, I'm gonna try, alright, so anyway.
One other thing, and, and I think you guys did a good job, so, we did have a homeowner come to the meeting last night, and I don't have the name and I should, he said that Aurora Shores permitted, um, Oster to put the, um, pipes into the ditch, and we, and that, somebody in the office, someone here in the village told him that, now, do you remember who, I thought it was a secretary, no, it was, was it Dan?
It was Dan.
Dan Georges, oops, Dan Georges, that's what it was, the short guy? Yeah, the short guy.
Oh, Mr. Esther, can you clear this up?
All the land is, you have to accept the upstream water, all that property overland flow into that ditch.
So they're tying into our storm, I say our, I mean.
But, but what I'm saying is, if you have a ditch and all the water's running there, you can't say, well, you can't run your water into my ditch, it, it, all the land is, you have to accept the upstream water, now.
Right, period water, right.
If, if there is a piece of land that was dug out that went into that ditch and that isn't their property, I'd have to check it, but they're collecting all the water, debris, retention pond, managing the water, we evaluate calculations, make sure that it meets all the standards, then we try to, we evaluate and make sure that the structure is properly being maintained and placed and maintained, from that, that water is then released at the reduced rate, that is the goal, and it's supposed to be maintained and better than existing, in other words, they use standards, they say the maximum is a twenty-five rain, twenty-five year event, you want it to release at a two-year event, so you're supposed to over retain, and then above that, at a fifty-year event, you can release at a pre-existing fifty, at a hundred, you can have a pre-existing, those are calculations that we go through to verify that that is occurring, as you, as the mayor alluded to and everything, they came with a plan, they knew everything, had to go to the front, their storm couch showed the entire building and everything going into the storm system, then they deviated, thinking they could walk out basements, and tried to come in with the rain barrel, we stopped them, they didn't go for a variance, we told them that this won't work, if they want to do it, they have to do the same thing, they have to put it in a central system, run it to retention areas, and manage the water, that's, they said they, they, they're gonna come in with a plan and finish that and do that, will the water go into the stream, into the ditch, absolutely, was the water going into the ditch before, absolutely, can we, can they stop them? They would be subject to lawsuit, because they had the water coming off the property in the past, now, we want to make sure it's managed so that there's not additional, the question on the blue dye is for algae control, obviously in a big storm event, it comes up, it overflows, you have that, is it environmentally sensitive, or is there any problems with it, absolutely not, that.
Might help other.
Some people might actually say it looks a little nicer, because the blue is gonna brown, but we don't, uh, you know, again, that gets to a matter of, uh, do we stop them from doing anything to keep their pond looking nice, because it does filter over, uh, that, that's a question that's.
One other thing I, I wanted to just run by Gene, Gene, should it really be getting released at the bottom of our excavated ditch, should it be getting released, shouldn't the retention ponds be getting released at ground level? Because they have that pipe coming out from their retention pond at the bottom of our excavated ditch, and I think that's where a lot of the problem is coming from, that's why the ponds aren't backing up, and, and originally that water was not running out of those, that woods, from the bottom of our excavated ditch.
I know for a fact, we, one retention pond, there was problems with the outlet structure, and Condon, who's working in phase six right now, is, had, had opened up that structure and was repairing it, we will go in there on all the ponds that serve that, now, the pond in the very back corner of four and five, I physically went there, looked at it, opened it up, there's a two-inch orifice, until it fills up six or seven feet, if you look at that outlet structure, it's about six or seven feet above the water that's sitting in the pond, until it fills up to that six or seven feet, with, it's going through a two-inch orifice, that's all the size that's going through, so, you know, that's a major, make sure that's done.
Once it gets up to the six or seven feet, what is it?
That comes over into a catch basin, which is basically a two-by-two.
Okay, that catch basin. Right, okay.
But that's the.
That two-by-two is gonna run it down the street.
That's gonna be the twenty-five, fifty, a hundred.
Yeah, okay.
That doesn't answer my question, there's a, there's a ten-inch pipe coming out into our excavated ditch.
Right, I understand because I saw the pictures.
Are you aware, that's my question, are you aware of the pipe?
What?
Wait, you have to say your name and address before you speak, sorry. Eight oh three oh four Clipper. Thank you. So before we brought the pictures in today, were you aware that there is a ten-inch pipe at the bottom of the ditch in Aurora Shores property?
I'm not aware that it's in Aurora Shores property, I'm aware that it's on the outletting into the, the stream there, yes, but I don't know that it's on your property or his property.
Well, there's stakes there, so it'd be clear, a whole area is staked with, with that levy going across, and I didn't step over any lines, so.
And then my second question is, we, we know that there have been violations, there have been many times where they started work at six-thirty in the morning, spotted a lot of neighbors, um, have they been assessed a fine once?
No, we put signs up for them, and I, they, Mario just mentioned the ends and heard it since then.
Yeah, the, uh, the signs went up sometime last week, because I, I was, a few of the residents in that area, I've asked them to text me whatever time in the morning it is, and I called the police right away.
So why are we spending taxpayer money to send the police out over and over as opposed to doing this plan?
Can I, can I, can I finish, please?
Yes.
The signs were made stating the ordinance and the violation, and that it would be enforced, so now, there's no question if, if they didn't know about it, because we kept hearing, new contractors kept going in there, different contractor, they didn't know about our noise ordinance, now when they pull into phase five to start working, the sign is right there, and they will be taken, if I get a text at six-thirty, quarter to seven in the morning, I call dispatch, the police are sent out, and they will be fined.
I mean, by that logic, to me, every time I ski and get pulled over, I should say, oh, send me a sign, you know, I mean, it just feels like at some point we have to give them some discipline, we're being modestive, but.
But I told, but that's, the signs are creating that.
That's what we're trying to do, we're, we're gonna, but, but, we're, we're gonna, but if there's a violation, call the police, we'll send them out, we're gonna take.
We're, we're trying to be.
Alright, so starting tomorrow, I will take ownership, every time at the bus stop, and I hear noise, I'm gonna be calling.
Do it, please, yeah, please.
And I, I don't want to bother you guys with this, this is not your, it's not your fault.
But I can tell you it hasn't stopped.
It hasn't stopped, we live on the street, we hear it every day.
You hear it before seven thirty?
We hear it, we are at the bus stop at.
Yesterday, let's say, or this morning.
Yeah, well, I don't know about this morning, I was there with.
But I knew it was as early as maybe a week ago.
At seven AM.
Well, the signs just went up over the weekend.
So.
Because I was still, because we kept, I kept getting the calls and the texts.
So I'm looking, so I'm adhering commitment that if we start calling at seven AM, there are actually violations, there will be a fine assessed.
They've been told.
I'm asking if there will be a fine assessed.
Well, there'll be.
Take different matters, I don't want to be cited, and then they'll go to court.
They'll be cited, that's all I'm looking for, thank you.
Yeah, I've already informed Gene for that, yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Now, I, I would like to mention that you do hear loud trucks before seven thirty, but technically that's not working, they're just arriving to the job site.
We'll, we'll start videotaping, I mean, they're on videotapes.
Hey, I live, I live right next to, I was paying attention.
I'll just say, it's hammering, it's vulgar language, it's the whole works.
Yeah, it's saying vulgar things, oh, yeah.
With kids sitting at a bus stop.
Yeah, it's contractors.
We, Mark Felkamp, three eight two seven Nautilus Trail, can we go back?
I didn't even call on you yet.
Sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Alright, go ahead.
Can we go back to the ten-inch pipe?
Yeah, well, I got it on my list here, what everybody's done.
We never went back, never answered it, Gene, is that legal for them to have it at the bottom of our excavated ditch, or should it be at the top?
It's legally have it at the bottom of the ditch, because ten-inch pipe is not in what, controlling the output, it is the output structure, which is usually a catch basin with an orifice, and then, but then you create a certain storm going over, so this is, that would be the appropriate thing, I know that on one pond in that area, it had problems because it had to be maintained, now that they're working on six, I know they opened it up and we're gonna make sure everything's maintained, our, and working order, but, uh.
So they're using a ten-inch line for a two-inch orifice coming out of the.
The two-inch orifices are separate.
Goes into the catch basin.
Altogether, the ten inches.
That is the controlled structure until it reaches the very top and overflows, then, then if you had a, if you had a ten-inch rain, as we say, which would be a hundred-year storm, it is going to fill up that pond, and go into the catch basin, and probably come out of that ten-inch pipe, okay, so that's full flow, but.
So that's, so that's the discharge on the overflow.
Until it, until it reaches a complete overflow, it is at a two, in a smaller orifice, and they vary, but on the one pond it was two, on other ones.
Okay, so, so just so I understand this right, that the two-inch orifice and the overflow come through the same ten-inch line into the excavated ditch?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more, so, I, I want to just keep on one subject, because I don't think your subject does this one, does it?
Hardly.
Hardly.
Mary Williams, one oh five eight nine Lord Street, I wanted to ask, since these homes are being built, and the drainage has not been proved totally yet, what are they using, is everybody using a rain barrel, or how's the water being drained at this present time?
I, I couldn't speak with authority, because Bob Brody is the building inspector who evaluates where it goes in, at this point, I understand, some roofs are tied into the front system going to the front, some roofs are going down to the rain barrel running overland, so, the sewer, the back roof, only the back roof, not the house footer drain, or the front roof, or the roadway, or any of that is being drained, it's just a, a, doesn't root back of roofs, or, they're not all built, so maybe four, five, or six roofs are being discharged to the rain barrel, they're going for a variance, buildings have not been, received a hundred percent occupancy, they're only conditional occupancy, this has to be corrected before they receive occupancy, so, I mean, for, you know, compliance.
My other comment was, how the garage with the lean-to on the back of it, I would request that you just take a drive down Connecticut and go around the corner and look at it.
I will.
The coloring is what was already, it's not that far off from the house, but the way the lean-to is on the back of the garage is horrible.
I agree, but I guess the, the architectural board of U K M, well, we were worried about the color, there was a match.
I know that you are, but the inspector should be aware of what was promised, and the inspector should be making sure.
And, and that was Bob. Now, I guess I was following up on the color, and you basically said what Bob said, right, and that's, when I looked at it, I kind of felt the same way, you know, so, the lean-to's a separate discussion.
They haven't been, they haven't specified exactly what the promise was.
The gentleman in the back, not, yeah, Mark, yes, you're right.
I, I got one more, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I will, with these rain barrels, I mean, I know Gene wasn't at the last zoning board meeting, and they had their expert from Summit Soil come out here, and, uh, he pretty much suggested that they were a horrible idea, um, they were gonna bring infestation, and, uh, obviously they look ugly, and obviously the other issue is they're clearly downspouts in the back of these houses with no rain barrels underneath, in those pictures you can see it, and that's in clear violation as well, and I still would have to say those rain barrels can't be there, with mosquitoes are really, really bad, and those, what he suggested is because no one's gonna maintain those barrels, they're gonna fill up, and they're gonna fill up with insects, and they're gonna get just disgusting and filled with bacteria, uh, who's going to be in charge of making sure those rain barrels are being maintained?
Nobody, but, but, rain barrels, you can go to, to Home Depot, buy a rain barrel if you want, and I can't stop anybody in this village from having a rain barrel, some of them have planters on top of them, some, they have all different designs and stuff, so if a resident wants a rain barrel, I, I don't, I guess we could put an ordinance, no rain barrels, but I, I know they're approved by EPA and everybody else, that they'd like to see that kind of stuff, when the gentleman was talking about, you have to keep it up and maintain it, he didn't necessarily say it was a bad idea, he just said you have to keep maintaining these things in order for them to be useful.
And from what you told me before the meeting, and correctly come that, correct with this Gene, is those rain barrels have an automatic switch to where they'll go automatically into the storm? Is that correct?
Storm bike, storm bike from the roof drain goes into the rain barrel, when it fills up to a level, there's an overflow, just like your, your, your toilet bowl, there's an overflow that goes right back into the storm system, and that's the storm system that they're proposing to install now, and that's, that's. That's, that's, would, would, would meet code.
And then that would be help in addition to at both ends that you looked at.
Have you looked at those rain barrels up close, just out of curiosity? Cause to me, it doesn't look like either those downspouts are attached to the rain barrel anyway. It just looks like it's sort of sitting to the side.
Sir, when the storm system's put in, then we will, we're gonna make sure that it's tight and proper.
All, all this stuff, if you wanna sit down, Mark, make a, a list of what you want your engineer to look at and we'll...
They're working on it.
Okay, for us.
Room Brounda, thirty-eight one five Nautilus Trail, resident for twenty years. Since this project started, this new, this development behind us, I understand we're on behind the last phase. And I hate to be the master of the obvious, but we had no problem until this development started. And we all, it sounds like we all know the problem there. And I sure as hell hope it's taken care of before that last phase, uh, that'll be behind my house. And, um, I just hope it's taken care of, all I can say.
We moved in, in my, Paul Williams, one oh five eight nine Florida Street. We moved in in ninety-two. I got a temporary occupancy permit because my front downspouts and my back downspouts were not connected to the drainage ditch in the back. Mr. Rodick told me that the code had changed in nineteen ninety-two and there had never been an occupancy permit for that house. Therefore, since we were the first people to occupy it, we had to meet the code. I could not put splash basins out. I could not let it run through my yard. I had to put a pipe from the front of my house to the back of my house, bring my downspouts down, catch that pipe, take another pipe from the back of the house to the drainage ditch, which you, as well as I know flooded four and five feet above the ditch for years. But that's where my drains had to go so that my downspouts couldn't carry it. And then the gutters just rolled over the side. But that's what I was told I had to do if I wanted to live in Remindville. If the code was that in ninety-two, I would think the code would be that in two thousand thirteen. And it didn't say I could connect it to a rain barrel and then take my rain barrel water and connect it somewhere else. He told me I had to take it to the back ditch that was the drainage ditch for that house. And that's what I did. And we lived with the flood. We lived with water within three feet of our house for about four years until this village finally moved the ditch. And I'm thankful for what the village did. And I'm thankful for Pat McCarthy because he's the one that stood up. But they had some drainage up above over at Marketplace, which is very similar to what we're hearing here tonight, that failed. And that's where our water came from. You could go up there during a major rain and you could watch this drainage basin build at the top. The water run down over the hill and come right down through Aurora and into our yard. And he has a picture here of one of these where the pipe is not attached to the rain barrel. And I would have to agree with him. The gentleman from Summit County more or less implied that in the winter, when it's cold, if these things are filled with water, if you have your downspout going into it, there's no way for it to get out because it's going through this. And we do have weather here that bests for this.
What was your problem, six, Tom?
My problem was this, yes, I said that. I'm thankful for that. But all I'm saying is, if that was the code in ninety-three, then it had to go through this.
But all, all I'm saying is, when I became mayor, it's one of the things we went after, right?
That's right.
And, and got the money for it and everything else.
But I can't understand why this builder's being allowed to go ahead on this one and not...
He just got done telling you to stop it.
Pardon?
He just got done telling you that, let's stop it. That's why they said you gotta go to the zoning board bill. That's why they changed the way they designed it. That's why we're doing it.
Aren't we still building houses?
Not, 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 not in that phase.
Not in that phase, okay. Cause we were under the impression some of the houses were still being built.
I can't stop them from, from the other phases that he has completed because then it becomes a violation, okay?
To me, I was using the impression it was in that phase that they were now being built.
Well, that thing's pretty much done, probably.
Now, Mark, there's still some, yeah, there are a couple.
Chris Boron, thirty-eight oh nine Nautilus, again, sixteen years this week. Pretty much been dealing with this, Sam, goes back a long ways, much like Al's story, I was...
And you've always had water, right?
There's always been water, yes.
Cause I've gotten many phone calls from you when you first moved in.
I live in a low spot, yes. And I've learned to deal with the water. But going back to my point for the question at the end is, a little bit of a long story, but let me finish. I was mandated back by Pat McCarthy, yourself, and the rest of the council at the time to clean out the ditch behind my house, which a previous homeowner had taken the duct off of the house and threw it in the ditch. Understood, I spent a whole weekend in there mosquito-infested, digging that thing out, getting it out of there. I don't ever wanna have to see that problem again. The water's flowed, Pat's maintained it. The ditch has flowed for years. Things have improved, especially with the issues that were taken care of down at the marina. Uh, the tree, the roots, the sewer, right? Things have definitely gotten worse. If I go back there today, there's a foot of water standing in that ditch. The past couple of years, there's no water in that ditch. To my point, we as homeowners of Aurora Shores were forced and told we were responsible for maintaining that ditch and the flow of water. Pat McCarthy's not policing it anymore. Who's going to police it? And are these other homeowners, this other development going to be responsible for maintaining that flow and cleaning out that ditch? When the trees fall, when the debris fills up, when the ten-inch pipes plug, who knows what coming out of there? Who, who's going to maintain that, police that in the going forward future? Cause as, as I'm looking at it now, it's my responsibility as the city has told me.
I don't know, I've been, I, I've been spending money like crazy cleaning ditches up. Fifty thousand dollars already this year, okay? So eventually as we do things, uh, um, before, like you said, we came through and said, hey, the homeowners own it. They gotta have the responsibility. I can still go back through there and you'll find bridges and stuff. I can find bridges all over this place, which when you do get a storm, guess what? Flex, people dump their leaves back there. That was the whole thing why we said, hey, put dumping your leaves back there.
We've got a lot more homeowners backing up to that ditch now and are they going to be...
And it's the same thing, you know, there's still, and to this day, there's things to be done. There's stuff, um, we're getting water from Aurora. All the new building that you see up there, you're getting some of that water back there too. You know, I went through it last night. I don't wanna sound a broken record, but some of you weren't there. If you drive out Old Lake Road there, during the storms, the water's coming back as one of your backyards. Yeah, but I don't have anybody controlling that for me. I mean, Aurora needs a whole, there's, they're watering back too at the same time.
Well, here we have an opportunity to...
And, and I'm doing it. I mean, there's things I'm doing all over this place. Especially since we're gonna redo, um, Nautilus. And there's, we're trying to put some things in there to control the flooding on Nautilus. So it's like, uh, trying.
I, I didn't say we're, I'm saying, look at, what, we're looking at the future here. Can we address this before it becomes a problem?
And that's what I'm trying to do. The, the whole, the whole process is that we're trying to do this. Um, it just doesn't happen overnight. But you know, not, when I, when I became mayor, this road out here wasn't done. And now the roads in, in Aurora Shores, there's a ton of them that weren't done. Go down to the old part of this village, they weren't done. So over the past fourteen years, the mayor put sixteen million dollars worth of repairing stuff. The past, I don't know how many mayors didn't put a dime in this place. So it's like taking an old jalopy and trying to redo it and make it right. So it takes a process. So as you find things out, you know, like, like you're doing, being active citizens, we'll try to go in and fix them and make them right.
It's like the asset analysis, that last phase and the woods that are standing there today. About two months ago, I went back there and I, and I, like I said, I've been here twenty years. I have never seen so much water back there now in the swampy areas. And there's ponds back there that weren't there before. And that water is getting pushed towards that last phase. And, um, I hope that's taken care of also. I, I'm telling you, I went back there and I've been here...
In your ATZ, yes.
Yeah, I went back there and I rode around. I just saw all those ponds back there and mosquitoes and everything else. And they weren't there before until this development started.
It, it goes back to they have to put up less than what they originally did. So that's the part we have to patrol. And, and maybe they'll offer to, to your board that bring their own engineer, let their own engineer look at it and tell the developer, will you pay for it? And he said, yes. So, I mean, I don't think you can get much more fairer. Cause I know you have a couple of engineers that you really like and you feel comfortable with. And that's, to me, is the best answer in all of them. Without, anybody having to pay for it, but the developer. And you can ask them about rain barrels if you want, engineer. But, uh, go back to the pipe, don't wanna see it one day, what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just give you a call and we'll go walk over. Say, show me whose property it is and whatnot.
I'll recommend when it's raining.
I see the amount.
Probably, probably a year.
Honestly, it's not a hundred-year storm. It's, it's a new storm. So they recommended you go out when it's raining.
You're not seeing any rain?
Yeah.
Pumping water? The rain doesn't bother me. Yeah, I, I, you know, I live in the shores, I, you know, but I, I look at Remindville as one place. I'm trying to make all of it so that your house values keep going up. You know, everything about it is, is better than, when I leave, I hope it's better than when I got here. So, if, if that's what it takes, we'll just keep on and, and go give us what we want.
One last thing.
One last thing.
Not, not tied to the stormwater. I get, you have two or three people ask me about the spraying on the mosquitoes, we used to do it.
They did, they did spray.
Okay.
Summit County does that. And it, it's probably been three weeks ago that they sprayed. This is a rough year.
I actually saw them last week throwing the pellets. They weren't spraying, they were just throwing.
Aren't those, aren't those pellets for the rabies?
Oh, it's rabies?
Rabies for rabies.
Raccoons, I apologize.
But they were coming through, but they go about, it's about two or three o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
You'll hear it, putter around.
We get yelled at if they spray for them and we get yelled at if they don't, you know.
I think that's why they do it two or three o'clock in the morning, so they're about...
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Sir?
Table Legislation Resolution thirty-seven twenty thirteen, Resolutions Act, recommendation on planning zoning commission approve the final plat for phase six at Harrington Place subdivision two, that's states table. Resolution thirty-five twenty thirteen, Resolution accept the recommendation of village engineer to accept the street dedication that is eight point seven seven five three acre portion of phase three, four, five, six, I'm sorry, three, four, six, and seven, as shown in Willbrook Road dedication plat, third reading.
Move to table.
To the table.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. King?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Resolution forty-two twenty thirteen, Resolution award to contract Tramore Corporation for Willbrook pre-dedication roadwork project that's an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand two hundred twelve dollars and forty cents, second reading. Resolution forty-five twenty thirteen, Resolution accept the recommendation of planning zoning commission to approve the replat block split consolidation plat of subplots one twelve, one thirteen in Harrington Place, phase four and five, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules to pass by emergency.
Second, roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Epstein?
Mr. King?
Yes. Move to pass by emergency, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Epstein.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Resolution forty-nine twenty thirteen, an amended and restated resolution of council of villagers of Remindville, Summit County, Ohio, first reading. Resolution fifty twenty thirteen, Resolution to hire Mary Claus as firefighter for Village in Remindville Fire Department, first reading. Does this have to be by emergency?
Move to suspend the rule to pass by emergency.
Second. Good. Roll call.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency. Second, roll call.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-one twenty thirteen, A Resolution to limit blanket purchase orders in amounts not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, first reading. Resolution fifty-two twenty thirteen, A Resolution accept assistance to firefighters grant in an amount of seventy-three thousand one hundred three dollars in order from the federal emergency management agency to Remindville Fire Department.
Move to suspend the rule to pass by emergency.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency, second.
Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Resolution fifty-three twenty thirteen, A Resolution on the resume area until agreement of purchase of twenty-fourteen international truck equipment for the use of service department from Jetco Truck Equipment for some not to exceed one hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency.
Second. For new cloud trucking. Roll call.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kandick?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.